Through June 30th, 2017. And then just for to clarify the record, although we did do it at the end of the second closed session for December 13th meeting, it seems that it wasn't clearly heard that when we did adjournment closed session, we reported that no action was taken at that second closed session after December 13th, 2016 meeting.
Congratulations Jeff.
We have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda, please.
Go ahead.
Second. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda? All those in favor of adopting the agenda is presented.
Aye.
Opposed. Pass is fine, though. It's time for public comment on non-agenda items. Anyone who needs to speak can go to the cards. I don't see anyone coming forward, so we'll move to our next section, the reports and our student rep.
So upcoming in the future at LBHS, we have the PSAT, pre-ACT score back night on Thursday, January 12th. And then we also have test prep for the ACT SAT on Saturday, January 14th. And the House of Reps also has a meeting January 20th. Recently, we just had the College Unplugged Alumni Panel where graduates, sorry, students who graduated from LBHS came back and talked to juniors and seniors. And that was on December 21st. And then we also had Road Trip Nation. And then we also had the Saddleback Mircirculation Testing, where nearly two-thirds of the senior class took the test, and that was on December 13th and 15th. Then we also have a winter formal coming up in three weeks. Our girls' water polo program is the number one ranked team in the state of California. Our boys' basketball team has had several big wins in the preseason, and our girls' program has a varsity and JV team for the first time in years. Our boys' and girls' soccer programs have had a great deal of success and continue to improve. We start Orange Coast League play tonight with all of our teams hoping to qualify for the CIF playoffs, and several league championships are a strong possibility. That's it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hold on, who's the rep, Mindy?
We are excited for a new year and committed to digging deeper into our contract language. I feel like I'm just barely coming to understand what my role is in supporting our faculty, and so clarifying things that we don't understand with our goal of creating the most supportive faculty environment for all of our staff and students and administrators, but there continues to be such a positive working environment in my office, and we're excited for it.
CSU and Mark.
Well, welcome to the 2017 rest of our school year. It's kind of exciting to be back. I get more productive when I'm at school than when I'm at home. First of all, we'd like to thank Mr. West for his continued support of CSCA in the years that we've dealt with negotiations and the things that we needed for us. And we wish you continued success and happiness on your new adventure. And, you know, that's an exciting new process that you have going on. And with our new news, Mr. Dixon, it's been a pleasure working with you all along, and I look forward to working with you over this next interim. We will be sending out our survey to start our negotiation process for our sunshine letter at the end of this month, and we usually do about 25 questions or so, and it's a variety of areas, but we'll only be opening two articles at this time since we're at the end of our three-year, this is our third year of our three-year contract. And Elizabeth Phillips and I spent two days in this room, and most of you worked here, but for the few people that were around, they know that we spent the better part of two days rewriting the entire Bylaws of Constitution of Chapter 131. And we will have our first reading tomorrow at El Moro and our second reading the following month, and then you vote on it, and then once those minutes are done, we will submit it to CSCA, but we've worked along with CSCA, changing our language of our exciting things that some of our administration had discussed. For instance, all of our board is nominated and elected at the same time, which can be somewhat upsetting if you're going to have a change or a revolution, whatever the other. So we decided, quite honestly, that it might be better to have it done biennially, you know, kind of do it every other two years, and we're going to have a staggered year in between, so we've got all the language properly done for that. And we're also creating three new positions, which is a corresponding secretary, a second vice president. And in the event that there is a president that is moving on and still employed, she would be the past president, or he would be serving on the board for their abilities. And if there isn't a past president, it could be a director position, so we're calling it a director or past president position to bring some expertise to the board that's in process, similar to the way other organizations that I've been involved with operate. So we're, again, very excited on helping memberships, excited to read all of this because it's a rather lengthy document. Tomorrow, we are having a CSCA meeting at El Moro, so that they can be included in our group, let's see how that goes, but also tomorrow, Dr. Odiibo will be meeting with our instructional assistants at El Moro and listening and hearing what their needs are as we move forward with the rest of the school year and in the future. So I thank you.
Thank you. Again, organization representatives here to report to us, right? I'm waiting on the cord. Just get back to my daughter's soccer game for sure. Hi, Happy New Year. Gosh, we're gone for break. I have no idea, and I just want to thank you so much for everything that you've done. I mean, for our kids, for our families, for the district. I'm excited for you, and excited for us to have Jeff step in, so, but yeah, thank you so much. I also wanted to thank, I'm looking forward to a new year, and really appreciate all the school board members and administrative staff coming to all our PTA meetings. I look forward to another year of continuing that, and it just means so much because I think we've got a lot done in the communications there, so I hope that that will continue. I mean, you guys are welcome to come to anything that PTA offers. I wanted to let everybody know that we do have our next coffee break next Wednesday the 18th from 8:30 to 10:15. That's at the Hotel Laguna, and we've been successfully having meetings there. And this next one is by author Harley Roke Rothbart. Sorry, I'm going to say his name wrong. And he is the author of No Regrets Parenting, and the topic of this next coffee break is turning long days and short years into cherished moments with your kids. So if you want, we have a really good one. I sent this to his husband instead of your girlfriend. So that's next, again, next Wednesday, the 18th. We have a conflict, a PTA conflict, in the sense that we also have an advocacy forum that's also on the 18th, next Wednesday, so you can pick and choose, you know, where to spend your time, but that is advocacy forum for the fourth district PTA, and it's measuring school success, how does the new rating system work? And again, the 18th, next Wednesday, that's from 9:30 to 11:30 a.m. at the Orange and Bite School District Office, and it's being presented by Celia Jaffe and Patty Spector. So I can choose those. And I think those are the only two upcoming things that I have to report on. I also have been participating, or the one meeting for their early development index. I really appreciate being part of that. I know Jan was there, part of it, several people, but both Sandy, I'm going to say her name, Bendatini is so amazing. I mean, she puts her heart into this, and Irene, yeah, thank you so much. And we look forward to having, I guess, two more meetings, and I look forward to participating in that, so that's all I have to report.
It's good to have your insights with Debbie.
Yeah.
That they have a board of people.
They did. It's really important.
Especially as you've grown up here, I mean, you've lived in the community for a long time, so that's, that's good steps.
Well, and I don't think people appreciate it. But I think people, I didn't know that that program existed, and to know that there's, you know, that she's there, you know, to help other parents into bringing these kids up, you know, kind of the right way in the development, it's really important, so yeah, appreciate it.
Parenting all the help didn't get there.
Yeah.
How's the soccer game going?
It's good. One, one zero. It's on board right now, girls' soccer, so happy to raise that over there. Thank you, thanks.
We have our representative from School Power. Okay, I can't see, I don't think I do, and I don't think there's anyone from the group. What were your numbers?
Well, I, the only thing I really have to report is I went to the TOW holiday fatigue before the break. I got 21s, and they were all worth of the town.
I thought I did well with $8.
Yeah, I was a softie. So I had a great time. I got all kinds of things. I actually kept a few little cute items as part of my decor. They did great job. And otherwise, I just, prior to actually break, I was able to tour three schools with Jason, so that was really great, Dr. Florin. And otherwise, I'm just trying to recover from the cold, and my whole house is covered. My whole house. Thanks.
Dean, thank you so much for all your service, and thank you for explaining the wealth of data that you collect and turn into a budget and a training campaign from when I asked questions about School Power to all the questions I said as a new school board member. And so thank you, thank you for all you do for our teachers and our classes, and congratulations. I mean, it's a job written for you. Congratulations, Jeff.
And I attended lots of basketball games, basketball during that Christmas break, and good to see other gyms, which was nice. And their lighting is not very good.
Obviously.
Yeah. And anyway, so that was awesome watch, and then when I was coming down the hill, I saw Fleming running up the hill with like two scooters. So I parked, and they went off, and it was awesome. So I'm not sure if it was his first time or second time up that hill, but you know, Fleming, Fleming, that hill is, is used for, so it was nice to see it. And it's all right.
Cheers. Jan and I did college career grant, but I won't go over that because we have a presentation next evening, so we'll let Patty and Ann take over that, and I'll just go upstairs. Once again, doing great work, though. I too went to the holiday fatigue, but yeah, you beat me by a lot of dollars. However, mine ended up in my children's stockings. So yes, and they were all like, what's this? And I was like, it's great, you're going to love it. Oh, yeah, they actually did, so it was great. And again, thank you to everyone who put the holiday party together here. That was always such a lovely event, and I think most people appreciate it, and I just, it's just such a fun vibe for a couple hours, you know, where all the chaos hits. I was actually asked to go speak to Don Honeycutt's class about books, and the, I'm a gracious reader, and I gave her, last year she asked me for my 100 favorite, which actually was more like 150 or 200, and she asked me to come and speak to her 10th grade, I think, honors classes. And it was such a wonderful experience for me because these kids ask the most insightful questions, and it's, it's books that I read since I was their age until last week. And it was just, it was, it was so gratifying for me to see the engagement. And again, the questions they asked, the interaction, it was just lovely, and so I felt so blessed to be asked to do that, so I'm just, as a creative thing, it was wonderful. And then I would also just like to thank Dean, your unique perspective by having kids benefit from this district has gone such a, it's been such a huge part of, I think, why I'm confident in the numbers, but also knowing that they're being spent wisely and well. And I just, I, I, I'm glad that you're moving on to something bigger and better, but you will be missed, and that perspective, I'm so glad that Jeff will be able to continue that, because I think it's, again, it's a unique and a key part of, of keeping us grounded in what really is important in it is the kids. So thank you, and Jeff, I look forward to having the same quality of relationship with yours as well, so thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd like to thank Dean also, we sure have been privileged to have you here in Laguna Beach, and it's tough because we only have to learn to share you, so we have to go back to our kindergarten lesson, we learn to share. You are so knowledgeable and patient, and you have that ability to explain rather complicated financial issues so that we can all understand them, and that's so appreciated. Me, I wish you enough complicated numbers and formulas to keep you interested, and of course, joy and satisfaction in your new job. And know we'll still see you around the county, and you'll affect that many more students by being at all the districts. Thank you.
I would just like to say that we had, again, terrific Christmas, I think they had a whole new music programs. Our numbers have certainly grown with the, all that we put into those programs, and they, it is no longer going to hear, you know, amateur hour, definitely. I mean, they are all so good, and it's really a privilege to have, to be able to offer that to our students. So we've committed to that, and I think we're really seeing the fruits of that. And multiple kids in multiple, doing multiple things, and also musically. I would echo what Keta said, and I had passed that on before to Victoria, the folks who were involved in putting on the open house, the holiday open house, because our people really do love it, but it was really exceptional, I thought, this year. Really, whoever had done all the, from the decorations to the raffle things, I mean, it was above and beyond, and so that, it was, and all the little blankets, I mean, it was, it was great. And then, again, we had a lot of information at the CCA, I still want to say ROP, but I, because it will be shared with you, but we really did, it was a very informative meeting, and lots of material presented by Patty to us. Then lastly, really want to give a tribute to you, Dean, because I, I guess, have been able to work with you the longest, and when you were working as a consultant to us, when Mrs. Shelton was here, it was definitely key to her that you become our CBO. I mean, she knew that that would be the best thing for this district. And as you go into the county, you certainly know our district intimately, so that gives us, I think, an extra assurance that in the years going forward, you will know if anything is starting to go off track here, and I will count on that. Because I have had the unfortunate experience years ago of not, of thinking you could count on the financial information and finding out you couldn't. And that is why, as people have heard me say repeatedly, that it is so important that your information is always accurate and detailed, and I have great confidence, and it's been, it's very different when you're a board member to know that you can have confidence in the financial information. It is key to the operation and success of the district. So I wanted to give you that tribute because it's, it's really important.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can I get my report? I didn't.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't do that part. I just wanted to give a shout out to Alicia and Bridget Porter for getting the art program going so quickly, for working with La Paba, with the Irvine Art Museum, and the Laguna Art Museum, and it's so exciting, kind of getting together also with the Marine Institute, and getting that A, so it's not just going to be STEM, but STEAM, and the man from the art museum that's getting that going at the Marine Institute is fabulous, and so chiming it out with Top of the World would be wonderful, and I just couldn't be happier with all the things that are going on, and they just keep calling me about, bubbling in my ear about all these things. Then I wanted to go over some of the things from the meeting today with the coalition, which you were there, and Amy was there for most of it. First of all, they talked about good news that we're Chinese took back on, took back drug, drug day three times, even though we don't do it in Laguna Beach because we have the drop-off at the police station, it still is really helpful. Most of the time was spent with a presentation by Dr. Stacy Cooper on mindfulness and stress reduction, and wanting to get that going more with students between the ages of 11 and 21. And she talked about, a bit about how that actually changes your brain, which makes sense. I mean, if you take drugs, it changes your brain, and if you work hard on something, it does, but what it does for young people is it kind of shrinks the amygdala and makes the frontal cortex, the frontal lobe bigger, so they're better at making decisions. She, part of our task today was to consider date night, whether she would do a program with parents on mindfulness, and there was talk about doing just a girls' program and a boys' program, because sometimes in those years, they feel more comfortable talking with all boys or all girls. Or the other choice was Dale Carnegie, and that one won, because, I think, because her program needed, needed more time, needed about eight sessions, and a date night program is three sessions, but it will give students a time to learn confidence in speaking and standing up for themselves, and what to do in conflicts, et cetera. And for her program, they don't want to just let it go, and some of the suggestions were to have it as a club at the middle school, or an after-school program at the elementary, or maybe do something through the recreation department in the summer, because what she has, what she's doing is valuable for everybody, not just students that are in trouble. And we also talked about, at the rec department, they're looking for a high school liaison because they really want high school student voice in what classes are being offered. So they are going to interview everyone who applies, hopefully somebody does, and listen to them, so that was, that was really great.
Is that for the recreation committee?
The recreation committee is doing the interview.
Okay, but I mean, they would be a student on the committee?
They would be a student going back and forth between the high school and the committee, giving input of what high school pits need, I guess, is the way I understood it. And in March, the PTA coffee break will be on mindfulness, so that might be a good time to, if we're going to introduce something else, or to work on that, to bring that in. And the Chamber of Commerce wanted to remind us that because we're a member, we can put anything on their calendar for free, and a thousand people a day look at it, so that's a good way to get things out. And the Presbyterian Church is doing a new, starting not next week, because Monday's a holiday, but the week after, on Mondays, they are doing a homework club for elementary students, one through five, and the bus will drop them right there, and they will, they're, when you have paraprofessionals and people in helping them with their homework for an hour, and then I think they're going to play games in a, for an hour, and it's $10, but you have to preregister, you can't just drop your kid off, and you've got to come get them. So those are things going on in the community. And then I also wanted to ask the other board members, over vacation, did you guys get calls from realtors?
No.
Okay. Oh, no, no, ask, because they have people that are thinking of moving into Laguna and asking questions about the school district. And there wasn't people here because, you know, we were kind of closed, so.
The board of realtors should have that information.
Well, they wanted specific information for special ed children, for A children.
I would say that they should.
What would you do?
If they contacted the Board of Education, then they could ask the district administration any questions and get the information, and that would be.
I don't think that they would go to their body. But that, the administration was gone during that time. And these people had flown in from out of state, were staying here, looking, wanted to know if this was a viable place to look for real estate for their kids, so I didn't, I should have told you, I mean, I didn't know exactly what to say. Okay. It picks you, I won't see you around, so.
I saw Parker around the music program because I forgot that was since the last board meeting. Just make a quick comment, because I miss the women. And these kids, I miss the high school, and so now you get to see my son play, but I got more video of him, and he was happier that there was more video, because I'd never taken pictures of tape, wanted to watch, and so he's like, maybe you should go, a lot of videos of me. But I had to say that the new, I mean, John, everybody loves him and what he does with those kids, Mr. Man, for, you know, six, six to eighth grade of kids who maybe have never touched instruments, makes sure the kids who have, and maybe it's just amazing because it's music, right? It sounds like music is what I mentioned, but new jazz teacher had the kids for six weeks, and again, kids who have never touched, haven't been in jazz, because seventh grade's the first year, right, so he's only having them for six weeks, and he, it was absolutely amazing, he had this, I didn't sit in front because a friend sang his seat in a short row, I've never watched music at that grade, that level, but he had this long list of all these kids who said that they wanted to practice improv and just do something, and he didn't list their names up, he just said, look, it's kind of tough, because you feel like you might want to, and then you look at all the people, and you don't know if you want to, so I'm just going to let them decide whether they want to or not, even though they, you know, they also, and then afterwards, I'll recognize them for doing it. And it was such a nice way the kids made, constantly, because if he had brought their name, right, they would all feel the pressure they had to, and the ones who did play, it was absolutely beautiful, again, kids who didn't play, like a full moon charm, like a little improv or something, but it was, it was just amazing, and for that short little time, they're going to have those kids, and he could have filed out of it, and he didn't, he stepped up, and they played.
Very jazzy, it was very jazzy.
It was very jazzy, and my favorite thing is that he constantly is listening to jazz music, like he has introduced a bunch of artists that they've never heard of, I know it sounds like part of what you should do, but, but just the fact that he will play a song, or tell them to listen to something, to figure out how it sounds, or how a basic guitar sounds, it's just awesome, and so the music program really benefited, and it was nice to have the jazz part, and thank you guys for everything you did to get someone in the middle of the school year, which, and that wasn't easy, after the term school year, I mean, it was.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to kiss a Phil admitted in my students.
Want to circle back any videos?
Sorry, sorry.
Victoria.
I passed.
Dr. Florin.
Happy New Year, everybody. It's been a busy time, even though it was leading up to break. I too want to echo many thanks for the employee recognition event of the house that we had, where we are able to recognize our employees of the year, and I think we already sent it outside, but again, Miss Stacey and Miss Nash, so we got to recognize as well some other classified employees for their hard work, and so, again, appreciative of the work that our employees did, they had well-deserved break for those that were able to get off for, for that time period. I know that I've failed to utilize a lot of them as well, and we appreciate having that time, with my own family. Prior to break, though, I did have the opportunity to sub for Ms. Beckley's class. Again, as part of the opening day festivities, I offered off the services to myself and the two assistants superintendents who have, who are certificated as well, to seven, some teachers cross-tripped, and it's a raffle. And I think we're down to one more left, I'm not sure, I think it's like back to middle school possibly, but subbing in French when you don't speak a little French, this is probably a challenge. However, we were able to do some Google hangouts with some people that I know that speak French, and actually speak eight languages, this is the lady that was fantastic, kids enjoyed it, they were passing my phone around, talking to her. The, it was really interesting to watch other 1A French students at the middle school, how you can see they were, they're trying, they're trying to figure it out, and then the 1B students are, you know, and it's, it's not that much difference in age, but and they are wizards, I mean, they're talking to her, and they're laughing, and engaged, and all, they were all having fun, and their hands, you know, who else wants a question? It was supposed to last for about 25 minutes, and they're going for 40-plus minutes, the kids really loved having the opportunity to speak with somebody who has experienced living in France, and is an American, but that has spent a lot of time there, so I know Ms. Beckley enjoyed her day off, and then also appreciative of the high school, she does teach one class over there, so was able to go over there, and they took a little bit of a quiz, which is always fun to be a sub when kids are taking, you know, tests, because they're always making sure that they're not, eyes aren't wandering. But after they were done, it was an opportunity for me to ask a lot of questions, and so they had an assignment that was somewhat flexible, so I, I kind of took it upon myself to just sort of ask you questions, you know, you know, what do you like, you know, what works really well about the school, and what are you enjoying? I have to say testament to Chris and his staff, the teachers there, the kids resounding said the teachers really care about what we do and how well we do at this school. And so kudos to our, our teaching staff and Mindy, and as well as our classified staff, because they mentioned that the campus is clean, it's always well taken care of, and people always walking all the smile on their face. And they even mentioned the campus supervisors being nice and, you know, looking out for us, you know, which is, is exactly what they're doing. So again, kudos to both Jenny and Solber and the Thurston students, just a well-behaved bunch of kids. And thanks to Lisa and Alicia for humoring me and joining me for a long drive, because then we all have some fun, kind of getting back in the classroom for a little bit, so. And I did attend Rotary, our vocal music group performed there. Again, amazing that the Rotary, just, they love when our kids show up, and they were blown away, they kept singing and kept singing, and the people didn't want them to stop, even though the program needed to get going, they were like, one more song, and everybody wanted it. So that was just a fun event, and they really were able to bring a lot of cheer to that group. So thank you to, again, to the high school folks for doing that. And last, but definitely always, a big thank you to Dean. You know, this has been, seems like because of break and, and all the pieces that have been going on with his, his new position coming on board. I've just been really thankful to have the six months that I've actually had to be able to work with Dean. When I met him, I, early on in May, I was just amazed at his ability to take a very complicated subject matter from, from most people and to simplify it down. And that is something that not many people can do and Dean's a master of it. He's very transparent. He has always put people first, our students first, in all of the decisions that he brings forward. And when he and I were chatting about, you know, where, where he started that and where he's left this district. He should feel confident, and I know he does feel confident, we talked about it, that he has been able to accomplish a lot of things that he's said. And he's leaving this district in very, in a very good position and I am thankful for that. And he will be missed, but as I told him, number one, I go to the county office quite a bit, so I'm going to him on a regular basis. And as his new role, he actually has to serve as a, as a resource to the local districts. So we will be calling him on a regular basis and definitely have talked a little bit about it as well. So I'm excited that we have a candidate that can sit into the interim building, that I know Dean, I thought this was a great chance to talk to him. With that, he will be missed, but I know I won't, I'll see you sooner or later, kind of that. But thank you for a lot of your service.
Dean, well, you know, this is, you know, you've been a friend and a, a, a great superintendent for me and has spent a short time with us. I, I, it's troublesome to try to, to, to put names out there because I know eventually I've missed some, you know, current board and passports have made diligent and strong discussion, good decisions. And when you look and be able to work in a community that makes great decisions, from the boards to the leadership, to employee base. And you can see the fruit from those, those in the kids and especially how the kids go through those programs. You can firsthand see that, great work that they're doing and be appreciative of that. And I, I just thankful to be able to work at a place like that because, you know, it's, it's a lot of positions that may not have authority that, that have such positive. They lift you up, you know, and, and then ones that do, you have leadership that lifts you up. And, and, and then you, you, you correspond with the board and they lift you up. So I, I think all of those things are, you know, great. I really appreciate it. I, I know that I'm going to a great place that has good leadership and I'm excited about the opportunity and my ability to support people that are doing my job. I care the local districts, so, you know, those twenty-seven districts and community, four community colleges. It's, you know, we live in the sixth largest county in the nation. And we have three million, over three million people here and serve over five hundred thousand students. There are CBOs in my role in every district out there that is doing that challenging job and providing that support source. And to be able to come along them, just like you guys like to support teachers or you like to support all the employee staff or all your staff that you have there. I, I like that rewarding experience and a challenge towards the end of my career to be able to go in and do that as well. But it takes away nothing from the great experience that I've had here, the great leadership team that's here. And I, I, I do feel that I picked it up, a very financially strong district. And I'm leaving a very financially strong district and I can do that with confidence with staff that I know are coming behind me and a great leadership team that is going to create and award that makes a very good decision. So I have no qualms without moving on, I've enjoyed my time here. Jenny, you've been on the board for a long period of time. It probably seems like just a fraction of time in the six and a half years I've been here. But, but, you know, that, this is, this is, this is a milestone for me. I started with two years, three years, four years, each job, even my own business was five years. And so this six and a half years is my peak of my career. And so as I go off to the county office, hopefully that'll be longer than the six and a half years. So I've progressed, I've made progress, so I'm learning. So, but each challenge that I've taken on, never, never back down from a challenge. And they've all been very rewarding for me. So, but I would like to just say, everybody, that I appreciate everybody, and I know Jenny's probably behind that, Lisa's all in there. Because everybody, everybody's face and, and they're all around here, everybody has impacted me. I can't say everybody because you can't just get out to do everybody. But the, the people that I work with day in, day out, I, I can say as I look and I go on around every school today and said goodbye and, and thank yous. But as you space, the, 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 the energy that they give me to do my job and my desire to want to do a good job for them is just renewed, you know, every day. So it's a great place to work and I, I appreciate the time, so thank you very much. Well, maybe for my report, I can say that Top of the World got, you know, their playground, their turf and compression pad. They're fixing to get that project going on over the winter break, it looks fabulous. You know, you know, you know, a year or two, how was it, two years since Jenny's got her turf over there and the kids love it. This looks so sharp up there, comparable, it looks great. We got the LED lighting going on on campuses, the HVAC, I think of the eighties in the, in the high school was installed. So a lot of that stuff's moving along, a lot of those projects are moving along and throughout the year. So that's, that's action, that's better classes, better environment for kids and we're proud about that. The other thing that maybe just informed me, the state came out of their budget today, so we have staff that are monitoring, looking at that. Very different revenues than what they projected before, a lot lower on the LCFS, pretty much flat out there for most schools. So again, we're financially strong, we're, we're, we're stable, so we, we have a lot of strength in this area and a lot of stronger districts. So, but, but the budget is out there, so we'll, we'll give you more information later.
Thank you. Well, Happy New Year and Dean, we're an O C O. Our department has appreciated you and your support of teachers and students and we are going to be a C O. I can say that the instructional services team closed out December very strongly. We have a fantastic team, we knocked out Thinky Maps trainings, Urbain Map Project, guidance team meetings, and we were just up to the end. I do, I do think I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge Mike and his team for Rocket Ready. They continue to roll out additional support with Kerry, Denton and Dustin Gowing behind the scenes. Behind the scenes, just doing tremendous work for instruction. Tomorrow, because of your support, we begin our after proficiency training, our five-day training for English learners and how you develop language support. So we're excited about that. And we've asked some students at the high school, some of our English learners, to kind of talk about their experiences. We're excited to kick off that. I've had teacher meetings at Thurston and I'm so appreciative of Jenny of squeezing me in. And I am meetings at Top of the World, thank you to Mike for squeezing me in and thank you. We're just lucky that you're so supportive of instruction and doing great with my kids.
Well, to start off the new year and, you know, talking about gratitude, I wanted to thank you, the board, for your contributions, your support and your attendance at the employee recognition holiday event that we had prior to the break. I know that it means a lot to our employees to see you out at the school sites and visiting their classrooms and, and their work sites and to be here and supporting them. That's not something you find in most districts, so I just wanted to thank you, it, it means a lot to our staff. And then to Dean, of course, thank you for your leadership and support for the last three and a half years that I've been here. We're going to miss your institutional knowledge and, and, you know, all of the things that you bring. Your calm demeanor and your integrity and you've always had students at the focus of what you do. So I'm glad that twenty-eight other districts will get to share you and will be able to benefit from your expertise, but we will miss you, so thank you. We need to stop right there. This is our consent calendar, is, are there any items that the board of districts could pull up? Then either motion to approve consent calendar items A through Z. Okay. And then, does it, is there questions on any of the articles? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry, it's my vote. And we move now to our information items, we have several. And the first up is Flygus Heredette.
I am, I am. I'd like to invite Heidi Romo.
There she is.
Hi, she's Executive Director of CCA and she's here to present. But I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the work of Amber and the support of Chris first of all, in the process of we move forward. So thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Well, good evening and thank you so much for having me. I'm super excited and pleased to be able to give you an update on CCA. I realize that it's been over a year since I've been here. I can't believe it because it has flown by and I feel like I have so much to tell you. So I wanted to kind of start a little bit backwards because I would like to take a look at this information that I put inside your folder here. I thought I'd give you an update on the local information and maybe give you an update on the regional information. So on the right-hand side of the packet, I brought a copy of that PowerPoint that you don't need. Is some information about college and career advantage and, and I also am not used to calling it that yet, so I might go back and forth and call it R O T here and there. On the second page, though, I wanted to show you our enrollment numbers for fall. And let you know that we are on track with last year. Last year, we finished the year with eighty-one hundred students participating in CTE courses and I expect that we will be around that range this year as well. And one of the things I want to point out is the eight hundred and sixty-four students that are taking classes after school. Because that is unbelievable, to have thirty-three classes available after school and have students actually take them. I, before my four years here, I spent twenty years in the L.A. County area and we only had two after-school classes and we struggled to have students come. And what's so amazing is your students are so busy and yet they make the time for these classes. So I'm very proud of that. I think you should be too. The following page shows you what classes your students are taking. So these are only Laguna Beach students and it shows the classes that they're taking after school. So these are the eighty-eight students that are traveling and taking the ones on your campus to all of these different courses. So I thought that information is good to know, we can monitor this and see where the interests lie and see if there's anything that we want to add on your campus. Going forward. And then the following page is a copy of your pathways. So we've spent the last year and a little more collaborating with your staff and developing these pathways on every campus throughout the region, basically, but every high school campus for CCA. And Laguna Beach has more pathways than you know because of those after-school classes. So we have classes on your campus that are shown in black and then the after-school classes are in red. Though we do have some after-school classes that are on your campus, they're still red because they're after school, okay? But you can see that you have several pathways and we've spent this last year working with Amy and some of your staff encoding these classes correctly. So that we have introductory concentrator and capstone classes in several pathways. This also helps us to identify the gaps, maybe where we want to add, work to add classes as we go forward. And of course, we're always open to those new and emerging fields that we may want to start building pathways in. So about a year and a half ago, we were charged with a, a little bit of a strange scenario. We were told that we wanted to, we were to grow our program, enhance CTE with about a fifty percent budget cut from CUSD. And we've actually done that. We added nineteen new classes last fall, we're adding eight new classes this next fall. And so we're very proud of ourselves to be able to do that on, on such a small budget. Now, thankfully, we've had this CTE grant, which has kind of saved us. And I've written to all of our legislative representatives to thank them and encourage them to continue it. We've used those funds to really enhance classes, make them more highly technical, bring them to college level. And so I want to tell you a little bit about that, but I also want to let you know some of our plans for fall on your campus. We've been working to articulate as many of our CCA classes as we can. And with the new state system called CATMA, I don't know if you've heard of it, but it's Career and Technical Education Management Application. And CATMA is a statewide program that will allow all of us to enter our data and we're piloting it this year for the state with Salvick College. Where all of our articulated classes will be entered into this state system. And the students who earn, who earn an A or a B in the class will automatically receive the college credit. No longer do they have to go enroll at Salvick College or any of the other colleges. They don't have to take so many units at those campuses. They used to have to take twelve units, some of them, three units, some of them, in order to get that credit. That is no longer the case. So we're really excited because this gives kids college credit when they graduate from high school. And so we are working to do as many articulations as we can. It's not difficult for us because we started with curriculum that was college level. So we've been very, very lucky in, in the number that we're able to get. So we've spent the last year working on those articulations, working on increasing the number of U C A through G courses that we offer. Our goal really is to have kids graduate from high school prepared for U C. They have college credit and they've completed the CTE pathway. That will truly be college and career ready. And then they have options, then they can decide where they want to go from there. So that's what we've been working towards. One of the things that we've been working on is integrating the district CTE and CCA CTE. So that we're not two separate programs. We have designed pathways that include all CTE. So when you see these documents, they include all CTE. And we've been working with our district teachers to get them credentialed in CTE so that their class counts in the pathway. Students, and now that we're able to code it and track it, we'll know when students have taken a complete pathway. And we're developing certificates, potentially a graduation card, some sort of reward for those students who complete pathways. So those are some of the things. In integrating our CTE courses into one program, we've come across some benefits to our, our teachers as well and to our students. Some of the things that we've been doing allow for district teachers to add internships to their programs. Because we carry the liability and the workers' comp insurance. So we don't have to worry about students getting hurt on the job, which happens occasionally. And also, it's so much better that their internship counts towards a class and credit, high school credit. Because when they go out and volunteer, they're not getting that credit as, in addition. And they're not covered through liability and workers' comp and all of those things. So we've just been increasing those potential opportunities for students as well. We've also brought teachers together to work in job-related groups, planning pathways, planning for curriculum and common assessments. And all of those things that I think CTE has been a little bit behind on in the past, we're really catching up to that so that we can show accountability. Part of the state's mandate really in, in education reform is called the college and career indicators. We need to be able to show accountability that our CTE classes are rigorous and that they are college level. And that they prepare students for both college and career, so we're working on all of that. So if I could go ahead and switch to the, oh, I have it.
Thank you.
So we offer courses in fourteen of the fifteen industry sectors and we have thirty-three of the fifty-eight designated pathways that the state has identified. At every high school, we have eight to twelve strong pathways. All of our CTE courses follow the CTE model curriculum standards, which are required by the state. And that includes Common Core, they're integrated. Our CTE classes meet the eleven elements of a highly qualified CTE program. We really can't do that on our own. CCA can't do it without the district CTE classes and the district CTE classes can't do it without CCA. So, it really is a wonderful partnership. We have Perkins and CTE incentive grant funds that we've really worked to spend on enhancing classrooms and enhancing labs and really bringing up the technical instruction in these classes. On a local level, in Scott Whitcup's class, we've spent some funds on his computers and on his equipment. And the benefit really has been that we've been able to put SolidWorks in his classroom and that was a difficult thing in the past. Students are now able to learn SolidWorks. There's potential for certification in SolidWorks before they graduate high school. And what a fantastic skill that is. That gives them a jump on college. And he's got some fabulous machinery in there. And I, I know if you've visited, just seeing the kids is so inspiring to see all the work they're doing. So, thank you for that. Now, I wanted to talk a little bit about, oh, I keep doing that. It's because I'm not used to switching it myself. I always still click now. The UCA through G approved courses, I put a list in here so that you can refer to those. Our articulations that we've increased over the last year, there's a list in here as well. It's not just with Saddleback, we've got Irvine Valley College and Orange Coast College, Santa Ana College. And basically, we will take articulation anywhere we can get it. We've increased our internships in our courses and here, we've added an internship for medical occupations and that class has just gotten started really. They've got a few sites that the students have started going to. And what we're planning to do this next semester, and thank you so much, Alicia, because I think it's a fabulous idea, is have the students go during class time. So, they'll do nine weeks of skills training in the class and then they'll spend nine weeks out on an internship during class time so that it doesn't take from their outside activities because that's the biggest challenge for students. And the teacher that we've got for that class is an expert at building internship sites and partnerships. So, she's going to be fabulous at getting some of the local medical offices and hospitals on board. We just recently signed a contract with Saddleback Memorial. So, we're very happy to have gotten them back. We had lost them probably about eight years ago, so we're happy to have them back on board. And one of the things that I wanted to mention that we're working with the teachers on is competency-based instruction. So, in the past, we've had course outlines for every class. But what we found when we started talking with some of the district teachers is that they had a very simple course outline and some of them hadn't looked at it in a very long time. So, what we've started doing is meeting on a regular basis to develop these student training plans and these are competency-based courses. Now, I brought engineering and that's a long, big one, but every single class has the same format. And what it is, is basically an outline that is including every competency that they will learn in the class. As they complete those competencies, the teacher will sign off on them. At the end of the class, the student has this document showing what they've learned in the class and that the teacher signed off and we issued them a certificate to go with it. So, we feel that it's very important, it's a valuable tool. It helps teachers in, that are teaching the same subject, make sure that they're all including all of these competencies and then also work on their assessments together. So, we've just begun this work. We hope to have these finished by April and they're almost done. But in April, we have a advisory meeting with our business and industry partners and they're going to take a look at these and give us advice on any updates or changes that we need to do to stay current with industry. Sorry. I made a mess. So, we're always working to continually, continuously improve and make our classes more and more highly technical and competent and relevant so that students can either have that choice of going to college and continuing that training, maybe work in the field as they go. These internships really help them get a taste for that. Once they try it, I can't tell you how many kids in the medical field say, "I'm going to be a pediatrician." And then, once they go out there, I've found them saying, "I want to be a pathologist" because they got to work in the pathology department at the hospital or "I, I want to work in obstetrics." So, it's really a great chance for them to try these things out and learn a little bit more as they go. And again, I, as I mentioned, our goal is to have them graduate with that college credit, UCA through G prepared and that pathway completion. So, now I just want to show you a little bit of these great pictures of some of our classes. That first picture over there is two of the 3D printers that Scott Whitcup students are building in their class. So, when I was visiting, I took so many pictures because I was so excited to see those kids built those from scratch. And the student came up and Scott said to the student, "How, how much did your teacher help you with that?" And he said, "Not at all." And he goes, "Then I've done my job." So, I just love those and I've taken that picture and showed it all over to all of our engineering classes as a great project for, for all of them to do. You know, we have fire tech. Those students right there in their scrubs are the medical class going out to take a look at a fire truck, the EMR students and the medical students to get some information from the EMTs. We have the surgical tech students doing laparoscopy and we have biotech students learning all about that field, which is one of the fastest-growing fields in Orange County. So, I wanted to show you some of those. Some of the things that we've spent, some of the CTE funds are, we've upgraded twelve computer labs. We've done four culinary classes with new equipment. We've put in some of the stand-up computers, stations in the classrooms so that students have the choice of standing or sitting. We have spent money on the electric car kits. So, now that every auto class has one, they build it from scratch. It seats two people, they can drive it, but then they have to tear it down for the next class to build over again. And then, we've spent money on engineering mass quantities of 3D printers all over town. The students that graduate from high school now, I think even, you know, you probably all know, some people's kids have these 3D printers at home now. Now, it's old hat, but we're getting bigger and better ones as we go. And three biotech labs across the, the region have updated. And then, we've spent money on salaries for teachers to add new classes because CCA didn't have that money. So, as we've added new classes, even though we're using grant funding, we're basically saying that once that grant fund runs out, we, we want to maintain those classes. So, I wanted to show you some of the fabulous stuff that we've spent money on. Those giant HAAS machines in the engineering class, what a great skill for students to learn. And going forward, we're meeting the requirements of the College and Career Indicators put out by the state. Our goal is to increase CTE participation and spend time with professional learning for all instructors in those types of things that we've talked about. Do you have any questions?
I just, I, I just want to say kudos to you, Anne, and you as well. Eighteen months ago, I was sure we were toast. This was not going to go anywhere we've done. You have done such an amazing job of, of turning water into wine. Really, truly, it's, I am so impressed and I think the passion you bring to it is, it's palpable and you do believe in what you're doing and you know we're doing the right thing for kids. And I'm glad, I do look at these numbers, especially across the, across the, as you call it, the region, basically cattle nest.
Yeah.
We, I mean, our eighty kids compare with high schools that are three times their size.
Right.
And I think that just speaks to the value that they, that they see that has been, that Anne has continued with Dawn's work and exposing them to really, as you say, practical experiences that they can take with them. And now, with all the work you've done with Saddleback and Irvine, allowing them to get the credit that they deserve for that.
Yes.
So, I, I just, I think it's wonderful and, you know, Jan and I obviously have more intimate knowledge of this since we do sit through the meetings, but it's a, it's, it's, it's really incredible what, what we have been able to accomplish with basically zero money and everybody pulling the right out for members. So, again, kudos.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Anne Bergen for doing such a fabulous job of keeping students enrolled and getting the word out there and really promoting CTE. And Chris, thank you so much for embracing us and, and letting us be involved with your staff. I really appreciate that. And your entire staff for collaborating with us on everything. What a great place. And Dean, I don't know, you're leaving this beautiful view. I also just wanted to point out, this is super drafty and it's not ready yet, but this will be going to all the counselors, probably in about two weeks. And it's got, it's loaded with information about industry, jobs, how much they pay, what kind of jobs are out there, and then pathways at every school. And so, it will help our, I think it will help our counselors very much in, in helping students.
And we actually, we actually got to see this at our last meeting.
We did.
I would recommend you guys all believe this.
Yeah.
Because it really does lay out very clearly what, what is offered and how to access it.
And how it relates.
And how it relates to, yeah.
It's, it's, it's a great resource, even if it is drafty.
Yeah.
It's drafty.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have Educator Effectiveness Grant, Destin.
Hi, Doc. This will be a short report to you, but I do want to commend you for your support of the Educator Effectiveness Grant. We have shared with you our plan, so this is just a summation of how the grant was spent. So, as a reminder, it's to provide support for teachers, administrators, as we move into improving student achievement for all students. This is how we spent it, I think this is the most important part of it, but essentially, it is our elementary TOSA coach support. It provided instructional coach support at the secondary sites. It allowed us to take a group to the STEM Symposium as we began our shift into NGSS. And it provided extensive support to our teachers in elementary around math. Shannon from HMH Math and not only walked through the curriculum, but modeled those really critical shifts in math that were pretty rigorous for our teachers. And, and to the, as I continue to maybe teachers, they continue to talk about how grateful that support has been for them. I asked Dustin for slides of some of his work. These are all off of his phone, so I hope you are willing to forgive us. But it does show the engagement with teachers, the trainings, the impact on students and how, how gracious, how grateful we are to you for your support. So, thank you.
And Alicia, do you have any idea if the state will re-up this at this point?
Based on, no, based on the budget that came out, the preliminary number looked like roughly $240 million and some kind of one-time discretionary dollars that's laying back out to schools. That's all school instructional state. But there is a lack of what exactly, what's that intend, what is that intended for? Is that mandated cost, stuff that you're getting payments on to all four, which is currently turned back or whatever, what it would look like? So, that will be coming out in more detail. But this grant was kind of that one-time dollars, the offset Prop 98, so that didn't, it didn't add it to Prop 98 to, to revest it up. They gave it in one-time dollars instead. That way, it did get to impact the, the funding so that I don't foresee them going back. You know, what also is the one other challenge is to see, this is the last year of the CTE grant. That will be coming forward and so, I, I think what Patty, Patty was talking about, letting the legislators know how impactful this is because it will start to fall on district shoulders to kind of carry the, that momentum forward and funding, et cetera, which will be kind of a big heavy lift for, for us, for a lot of districts if the state doesn't continue to find a way to help support that. So, but as of now, I don't see any more dollars coming out for the Effectiveness Grant.
So, you'll keep us informed if we actually need to, just while we, on what, what the value is into our district. Thank you. Okay, next is our overview of social emotional supports in LDU SD. Alicia.
Okay. Last, but certainly not least, we, we have been on a journey in our district to provide supports for all of our students in really comprehensive ways. So, this is just a quick reminder of how social emotional needs really impact students' lives. Tell you a little bit about our student data around those needs and then talk about a plan to broaden the system for our district. I'll give you a moment to read this. Is there any of that data that's surprising to you? Yes. So, in terms of our students, here, Amy Corrana is to be acknowledged for this. She helped us put together this data. This is the data from our particular students. One thing I want to spell out for you is the high, the protective factors of students is students indicate if a teacher knows me, knows my name, I can go somewhere and get help. Those are protective factors, so those are our students. I believe the high school popped in there, it's supposed to be high protective factors. But that a student can go to school and feel, I have advocates, that seventh graders, almost twenty percent of our students reported feeling chronic sadness in seventh grade. A quarter of our ninth graders did feel that there were high levels of school supports and then almost forty percent of our eleventh graders reported feeling chronic sadness. That's this year's data. So, some additional data, I think it's important that we take into consideration. Here are our numbers, thanks to Irene for updating needs just yesterday. These are our students that are eligible for special education and many of these students also are receiving behavioral or social emotional supports as well. And another set of data about our students, these are our students on five-year programs. One thing that I wanted to do is share with you just two of the top two best practices of the ten best practices. Train school professionals on the early warning signs of mental illness. Communicate with families. Train professionals in research-based practices. Those are the top two best things and as we think about building a system for our district, that's where we want to begin. So, I'm sure you're familiar with this, but this is the triangle we keep going back to, right? How do we provide support? Most of the students are in the grade, but we know that some students need an additional shot in the arm, so to speak, of support. But some people need really intense, some of our students need really intensive support. Amy Corrana and Irene White have been instrumental in starting that work with our guidance plans. They are comprehensive, they include academic, social emotional, college and career readiness goals. Those are underway. But again, tier one, two, and three, what we don't have in place right now, though, it is our goal in February to begin to identify some universal scanners with block February 10th as a day to start looking in and diving in to identify early warning symptoms. So, we're not waiting for kids to tell us. We're going out and looking for them and doing double checks, right? Doing our due diligence. We want to be able to establish partnerships with families and so they know they can come to us and help them identify warning signs as well. And then, again, tier two and tier three, so we're in tier three, in that upper red quadrant, we're really wrapping around services for students. You know this, we have been on a journey as a district with your support. We've added psych support changes, we've added an elementary counselor. This has been how you have supported our students. One of the things that I'd like to bring forth for your consideration, we would like to bring forth for your consideration, would be the um, a job description for any director. Not quite sure the title. We've talked about mental health, perhaps, social emotional learning, but a director that would help us build a comprehensive system for all students on January twentieth. But thank you for your support. Do you have any questions for me at this stage?
My exact questions or comments, I mean, I'm so pleased that we're looking towards going to a comprehensive system for all students. And it just really hit me hard over this vacation. I heard from a couple of my former students that you would have never guessed would have ever had any problems. I mean, they were top class, went to good schools, that suffered severe depression. One couldn't meet me today because she had to look back to her master program. But I think to have for everybody to have skills to deal with some of these mental health issues that come up, whether it's mindfulness, breathing techniques, or whatever we can do, we could all use it. And I think to expose all of our kids to it is really, because we don't, there are kids that are not going to come out at the top of that triangle, but they're going to have issues.
Thank you for your questions.
Alicia, I just read something that was, we might add just to your, you might already be looking for this, that the old classy picky eater child, that there may be a lot more connected with that, that are real indicators of underlying issues that could be identified really early. And actually, the person writing the article was talking about children that have particular tastes, because looking at it with a more positive and just saying, you know, the more negative, even that actually, that the pediatricians need to pay more attention to when the parents come into these comments, not just with not getting the nutrition that they need, but also that there may be real specific positive issues underneath. I, that was news to me.
And Dr. Deva has something, because the pediatrician probably.
Frank, Frank, say it.
She has something, because there's actually a class system. I mean, my kids are troubled now, but it was like, it was because it was aged out, I think elementary or sixth person.
Yeah.
But it was like classes that parents.
Well, we do assess, I mean, early, you know, we're, and Irene knows that certainly, I mean, because we're for children that are before school age.
Oh, yeah.
And I, and actually, I still, I always like to give confidence in this district. I mean, things have ebbed and flowed often, but they're driven by, you know, financial constraints. But when I was with the childcare at the Methodist Church and Lisa's school was open next door, they would come over. And if I had questions about kids that were in our program as preschoolers, and they would come over to do early assessment, because they knew that even at that time in the dark ages, that it was so important if they could catch it early. Because we mostly would see more, you know, more layman things like the language. But that they really, you know, the people that were working in our school district wanted to know that so that they could start working with them, maybe number two or three before before they went next door.
And.
And maybe those last, right.
Right.
And as as Alicia mentioned, we're going to spend some time, you know, talking about universal screeners and what are what's available off there, that are really simple things for our teachers to to answer some questions about students that are research-based and help us identify students that might be at risk and might need some things before. And being proactive is very important. And the other part about being proactive is having the safety net in place once we identify these students. So what does that look like? So the next step is is Dr. Deva mentioned will be to bring forth a few job descriptions at this next meeting in January. That will hopefully continue to help our counseling, social emotional support evolve and add some more support for our staff as well as for our students. So along with kind of the 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 yet-to-be-named director title, if they were still missing with the actual name, the job description duties would be very much a support for our staff and for our teachers. And then also looking at adding a a a counselor or an order, what we call a social worker, that will fill in that void of when we identify these students who need some more robust one-on-one counseling. And that's definitely would look to be a job description that will come to you as well. Obviously, we're going to do budget development for the following year. We'd like to have that, you know, as as a discussion item. We think bringing the descriptions first is really paramount, so that we can talk and show you what the intent of these positions will be as it fills this need that we're facing growing over time.
When you talk about universal screeners, I that's, I just have a question. Are these going to be certificated teachers? Are they going to be the psychologists? And and you know, they're going to be going out, are they going to just be like whisking kids out of lunch and saying, you look messed up? Or we, what you, you know, how's that gonna, how's that gonna look?
Of no, no hairs, no project. So it depends on the universal screener. Some are administrative, administered by counselors, some are at elementary level, for example. We've looked at a couple K through two grade spans that are administratively by parents. So we've looked at, we want to look at a bunch of them, so we get everybody in the room that needs to make the decision to help us think through that and be really critically looking at different grade spans for what's appropriate. But there are surveys, there are questionnaires, there are online, there's, I mean, there's personal practical.
Okay, so that's, yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
Yeah, there are a bunch of options out there.
For the K two parent, it's that child's turn, right?
Yes.
So that's fair.
Oh.
Yeah.
So you have jealousness.
Yeah, and and one thing, you know, when
Did me.
When Dr. Adipo, Irene, Amy and I went down to that mental health conference, that was kind of the national conference on school mental health. That was a great takeaway. We heard a lot of different programs around the nation, uh, brought universal screeners. It's a little like kindergarten that were like five questions that were research-based, that a kindergarten teacher was able to say, you know, how's the student interacting on the playground with other students? And it, all it does is give you indicators, nothing that says, oh my gosh, this this student is in dire need of support, because that traditionally comes out pretty easy, right?
Easy on that thing, is that it's the low.
Uh, it's the low lying stuff, the stuff that you might not see right away. And how do we, you know, see it, have a conversation about it in a proactive way? So while we were there, we also met, you know, Irvine Unified School District, Uppour Mesa. They've all kind of gone down that road a little ahead of us, as they're at least to adding specifically social workers, MFTs at their school sites, especially at the high schools. So we will learn a little bit about the successes in Irvine, some things that that if they were to do over again, they might change. Some of these that they're evolving to, which I think is helpful for us as we kind of take that next step, knowing, using their knowledge of what's working and how we continue to improve it to improve it for our students. So we're, that's why we continue, we were wanting to read the job descriptions to you at this meeting. It was determined, I I felt it was more important to give you kind of a, the board a better understanding of where we're at right now and why we're continuing to see the need for us to evolve into the next area. And then we'll bring the descriptions forward at the next meeting to have a better understanding of kind of what the roles will be. And then obviously, we'll do budget development. That will be when we determine how much are we going to fund towards this.
And and then my other question, because our current, our counselors, our high school counselors are not actually equipped. They have not been trained in in this sort of meta.
Not to that same extent as a social worker.
Is that. As a social worker, is that correct?
Yeah.
So so they, we really do, we are missing that piece.
Yeah, if you look at most models of counseling models throughout the United States, the one area that California has been lacking in the most is social workers. I think Lisa can attest to that, having been in a mission where a part of their counseling team is a social worker. A social worker, counselor, you know, correct. We, California model has not been to that extent, and you're seeing it more and more. Again, a lot of our surrounding districts have already gone to similar models, whether it's a social worker. Social workers with PPS credentials, which is the same as our school counselors, which is the same as our school psychologists.
It's a whole person.
Yeah, it's just in one of the different branches. So they they share some commonalities, but there's some differences as well. And, you know, we've had some conversations with our school counselors related to, you know, what do you need? And they they clear, this would be very, very helpful. It's an area that they know is continuing to grow. The levels of stress our students are under, as as Perry pointed out, is continues to rise. How do we equip our students and how do we equip our staff to identify as well if they see somebody? Not that we're asking them to solve the problem, but we, what indicators do we want them to use with a a generalist student that they may see all of a sudden is exhibiting some signs? What do you look out for? What are those things? And who do you go to? What's the resources in place? And so pretty clear guidelines, which is what the tier, the pyramid of interventions is intended to do, is was our step, what is our process by which we can continue to support our kids in the way it falls through correctly?
And then also then having that professional, what I think, oh, perhaps hold more credence with our parents.
Right.
If there is some sort of, if that is part of the issue.
Yes, you can fall on either, on either side, right? They're actually coming to the school saying there's a problem when there may not be that much of a problem, because they, you know, there just may be some control issues or. But then the parent on the other hand, where there may be some real urgent issues and it's very frightening. And so often then there's a denial in there. So we would be able to to look at offering something that worked with family, I mean, that would not. I just, I just.
Yeah. Give them expertise and immediate support.
And this, in the city, you know, they they've been able to work with a resource in the county, and they've been able to provide. The county has been providing a resource two days a week right now that's focused on mental health in the community. And we believe, did we have the meeting or we have a meeting set with our resource in the future as well, to say, here's what we're going to look to do. We would like to build a partner, because we know that mental health doesn't stop at two thirty or three forty-five, that there are things that happen outside of the school day. How do we continue our partnership? So if somebody is responding, that we have clear lines of communication. So it obviously is a much larger conversation than the state that you're seeing come forward. That was one of the things that was mentioned in the budget conversation today, as I was watching the, it might, just kind of seeing Twitter feeds and watching people post up, LA Times talking about counseling is somewhere where we need to continue to grow. And with the budget being kind of flat, it's an area that many will be struggling to do. That's why we're in a good position. We would look to add some things to support our students, which we don't want to support. It's all the data from our, the kids are there. It's important. So when we bring forward those those job descriptions in the next meeting for discussion.
Thank you, thank you, Alicia and Irene. So next we have our first reading of our policies, and I would suggest that we take them on this night. If you have time to ask any questions for patients or high school on these policies.
I'll I'll take it off, because we have the, we're going to buy and conquer on this one sort of a long list. In the chart, you can see that there are comments related to whether these are new laws, new regulations, or simply we didn't have a policy in place and we identified the need. Or simply it was recommended to have a policy, we just didn't have one. So in absence, we've we've identified and he's done a great job as well of identifying several policies that we didn't have in place that really were expected to. So also the first one, which is the non-discrimination district program in activities. It falls directly into my area in particular, but also it has lots of carryover into instruction, has a carryover into resources, et cetera. Point out that this will be, you know, I annually have to review all the stuff that goes out through with staff as well. Amy is is very involved in that, because she does a lot of the stuff that posts out there related to our annual updates, the information we send out to our families. So there is an annual review of these types of items related to non-discrimination programs. Interestingly enough, the, some of the language in there is unique, specifically in in Jan pointed this out to me as a victors more recently, there was a statement about applicants, applicants for admission and employment, which is, I mean, fifth paragraph down. And that's actually their language related to the Code of Federal Regulations language. So this comes directly out of the code for regulations. It's their language, not any language that we would traditionally use. But we do get inter, you know, transfer requests at times, so it's that applicant for admission, it's just a popular way of saying it, but it's generic in that it serves schools all throughout. So whether it's college, university, or maybe that's the generic language that they utilize.
So it's okay for us to leave that in there, even though we don't consider like.
Yeah, I looked at a bunch of different districts around, orals of maybe.
Yeah. And we're all just basically.
Yeah, I looked at them and I said, everybody kind of had shared that, and I pulled up the actual regulations, CFR.
It's like a preschool transcript.
Yeah.
Make sure.
I thought it was odd language as well, so when I looked at the actual CFR, one oh four about eight and one oh six dot nine, it's cut and paste from that.
That was while you were watching them, on your presentation.
It was more of an honor, definitely.
That was exciting, though.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was fun.
Well, I had a question in the third paragraph also with the grouping, any of the protected categories. And I'm sure it's the same thing, the language coming straight out of there, but it seemed to be in the first paragraph, it was covering all, first sentence, all individuals. And so it would, I just didn't know why then it specified the individuals or groups in the protected categories, because it would be everyone. But that's just the language they put in. It's just to, is it just like to give that extra coverage?
Right. It is. So if you look at the first paragraph where it talks about, it says all, and then it goes into specifics, those are all the protected categories.
So every, then basically everyone's protected in a, in a protected category.
Correct. Correct.
Okay. Sort of kind of finding that, like, did they define it or there's just.
Yeah, they defined it in the.
So does anyone have any comments, questions or? How's their, brings that.
This is language directly from.
This is language directly pulled from GAMET, which is CSBA, and it's the, that it kind of legal. So as you look through the policy, it does reference the Code of Federal Regulations. So we we're not helped to just an education code. I think some people may misinterpret that, that we simply are guided by ed code. We actually are guided by a lot more than just ed code. If you look on the page sixty-four, you can see the legal references that go into creating these policies, and it is not just ed code. There's penal codes, there's code regulation, top five, top twenty, top four ninety, top forty-two. You can see all the different pieces that go into these regulations. So we like, it's safer for us to use what you might call, whether put language related to policy, because it was embedded and very much clear that this is what the expectation is that we're looking to. We haven't had this policy in place. We have, obviously, we do this, but it is something that we, it's, we're putting it out there simply because we need to have it very clearly, or clearly, and delayed for ourselves, so.
And I think it's important to have a policy, not just a federal law.
Yes. Of course, yeah.
Important to have a policy. Can you come back for a second?
Yes.
And next is Dean, Steve, yes, the next one.
All right, so spoken of the organizations for policy twelve thirty. This is a school representation draft, but also you'll find this policy and four of these policies in the ASB manual from the state. So that manual is our authority when it comes to how a student body operates. They have chapters there on school-connected organizations and boosters and how to operate and associate with schools. Since from our financial standpoint, a district, a school district is a, you know, our records are held up here and it is part of us. What's not part of us is any school-connected organizations or foundation and those kind of things. So when you read through those guidelines, these policies or these policies that will deal with the night kind of come out, and they come out around fundraising and give the, give the bullet points in the sense that these are enabled to raise money on past behalf of school programs. And it squarely puts the authority on the board as far as for them to participate on school grounds during that time. So these policies align to administrative regulations and processes that would roll out even to the ASB manual as a state guideline. So this is kind of is the board policy piece of that.
And so does this stop me from pretty, you know, get funding account where I keep all the money? I say I'm raising it for.
Right, yeah, so 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 that's, so that's where we administer regulations and then processes and procedures would become, it would dictate that. What this states is that a request would be made for regarding a solicitation or something like that.
And we will act on that.
So then we have, so you have, you have time to act. So the policy of the ministry regulations will give you time to act, so before somebody does something, they ask. Instead of finding it out in the newspaper that somebody's raising money on this behalf.
So when, after we bring this back to the second meeting and we approve it, then will we be going and having the groups that are already in these systems comply with this?
Right, so.
So that's my question. Is this, do you get to just booster or just PTA as well under this?
Uh, the the PT, yeah, so so there'll be one here under the foundation, but this this does.
I saw a lot of foundations.
This does go with PTA, this does cover boosters, covers, for me, ours, boosters, athletic boosters, a lot of, a lot of groups.
Okay. Okay.
And in in a lot of those cases, I think, where you look at foundations with the PTAs, you're looking at kind of a more of a blanket. You know that they're raising money for school programs. It becomes different when somebody's doing, enhancing the educational operation by raising something to send somewhere else. And so that's what arises in our concern is when money was going out on a benevolent. And so that's what arises in our concern is when money was going out um on a benevolent path somewhere else, that money can't come to the district.
Okay.
You really need to be working with a third party. And so how do you recognize that third party? And how is the funding taken care of in that kind of situation? So if uh the A S B club is working with the Red Cross and they want to send money to the Red Cross, how is that money going to get to the Red Cross without becoming district or public funds? Um and so so that is an authorization or fundraising event.
Okay.
So there really is no qualms over most uh you know, events that you would have, especially obviously with the foundation P T A. Uh but it does recognize that the board has authority to say, well, we control the campus. Um the school administrator and everybody has to have some kind of knowledge of what's going on. Uh and the board is the authority in that here about where that where that that authority sits. And then through through your your process of how we have established that for recognition or approval, then then that kind of develops how far you push that down as far as an an inability to to recognize those events. So um and so that's where we set up the um processes and administrative regulations.
Not to pick a scalp, but um so like T O W, would they with the holiday boutique, each class sends their funds off to whichever charity date chosen. Would we then?
You would recognize those charities. Uh so so in the sense that uh we don't want the money to come to here. So the way we've worked it out with holiday boutique is that they take that money, go to the bank, get a cashier's check and it goes directly to the.
And got.
But they're doing that. They're doing that event on campus. They're doing all that stuff. So in in that case, because we we said there was kind of a six month moratorium, but we knew that certain things, specific of ring mammal center um and the holiday boutique, they were coming out before. So we have a first reading, a second reading, and then we'll bring a list to you of those uh ones that we've already um uh authorized with pending of board approval application. And which are common ones we've done historically. So it's it's so I think uh yeah, so.
It's a leak. Does this require more internal controls of boosters? Or this just require because that's a that P T A has natural internal controls because it's natural. It's what our you know, foundation has its own.
Well, the the booster itself is is we're we're not in control, uh not a booster, but we are in control in the sense that when we receive that money.
Right. Okay.
Yes, so it definitely can can relate to uh what can control that maybe maybe the boosters. But I think for 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 our purposes, it's recognition, if if somebody's raising money on behalf of the schools,
Mm-hmm.
then you have the the responsibility and authority to determine whether that is an appropriate uh nest to receive that money. So when we receive that money, are we receiving something that you've recognized that is something that you want to receive? Because you're you're looking at that purpose of reason why that was raised. So before that activity ever gets started, you want to have acknowledged that that money has been.
Getting better. So really, really, i- it's not that different than what we're doing now in that boosters will only raise money for booster programs, you know, to be spent on students at school. P T A only spends money at the schools. So it's really, it's really just these sort of niche things that happen every so often during the year at your sites that.
Right. Right. If something happens that.
Or where they're raising money and then giving it away immediately instead of to us.
Right.
To another organization.
Okay.
And then there's a process by where they apply to do that or need to what.
There will be once we once the board approves the final reading and what makes us the policy, then that's where I was at.
The R.
Then they create the A R, the administrative regulation that will accompany this. And so Dean's already kind of started kind putting the 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 touches on that in terms of looking and talking with all the different parties and saying, okay, so here's what we would like to be able to do. Um how would we go about doing this? Making it, we want to make it as easy as possible, while at the same time, we also understand that we do have a responsibility as a board to ensure that when people are using Laguna Beach High School or Laguna Beach Unified School District and and raising money on behalf of our students, that there's a responsibility that we have as a as a school district to ensure that the money is doing what it's supposed to be doing.
Doesn't infringe on the educational activity and what's going on and all that.
So.
Right.
So.
And supply the things that like if it's not just money, like the food drives.
Yes. Yeah, so we would ask like the intent would be at the beginning of the year as much as we could to take a big group of the ones that we know are the regulars. So obviously we could just say P T A, boosters and these different organizational.
Right.
Uh we have the holiday boutique and and those different things. We also have a club list of all the clubs that our high school students are utilizing. So we create a better process for us and and it's and just create streamline it for our staff. So when they do take in money, they know exactly the process by which they have to that utilize, okay, so get this here, get a cashier's check, here's the direction we're going. And it it makes it much cleaner than having people have lots of cash.
Yes.
Where going, what do I do with this? And then it coming into the A S B account and it's really not, you know, appropriate for then it to come transferring it. It's just that's not the right process. So uh.
Particularly now, a lot of the high school clubs are set up doing that where fifteen years ago, they were just like, you know, you have a Spanish club or I mean it was they weren't raising funds.
But now they're a lot more.
Now they're doing it because they want to add as their as their service, yeah.
And then and then sometimes we have students that take it upon themselves, you know, like an example would be I had a little girl who I don't know, studying past history and she found out about Bubbles, the old hippo that died.
Yeah.
And so she wanted to raise money for hippopotamus. And she got, I didn't know, but she got all these kids to give her their lunch money and you know, she got and parents then their kids are coming home. She's got this big pile of money and and um uh.
She come down for Bubbles.
Well, Bubbles is no longer here. We don't buy hippo fund. Anyway, I got her to eventually she kept it to friends of the sea lion, but you know, sometimes you don't even know.
Right, well, you you and you recognize gifts coming to you and you have to decide, you know, with all of your compliance issues related to public education, whether you can accept that gift and what does it mean not. It's it's a little bit late after they already raised the money and then the fundraiser about whether or not to accept that gift, but you have still have to have that authority to do it. So this gets on the front side act and says, okay, before we start something, let's talk about it.
Okay, thank you. So it's ready to come back to you really.
Mm-hmm.
And next uh the educational foundation.
Yes, and we we met with uh school power at regular monthly and showed this to him that, you know, it's um pretty much it's pretty standard language and why wouldn't we um and I think uh it's pretty standard for educational foundations um of what we would expect with the kind of education and with it they they focus on for a state.
So and this language came from.
C S B A.
C S B A. I just had a question on the consent. Is that a one-time consent or I mean each time consent or is it one consent in the in character of speech?
Uh I would I would uh lean towards the the regulations will probably be more of a blanket consent when you're talking about the foundation, the P T As. Um.
Do you recognize them once?
This is specifically to the foundation.
This was the foundation.
Yes, yeah. You recognize them once and if it was determined the board didn't no longer wanted to recognize that, then there would be actions.
What is it good?
Well, this is this is the consent to use the district's name.
Right.
So.
But I think it's good for the board to know annually, you know, who's the president, who's the treasurer.
Mm-hmm.
Um and and those kind of things are set out because these boards change maybe every year or something like that.
Mm-hmm.
And sometimes it's good to have maybe one informational item that says this year, this is, you know, this is who, you know, is in control, what's going on.
Well, the school's name goes on things. I think we should at the at the front here. And then I just um the definition, I mean that again recently it came in probably through the cartoon, what was what equal and what's equitable. And equitable is really what you want, but uh equitable doesn't necessarily. So that's I don't know if we defined that so that there's a greater understanding. I say uh someone in the local parent community looks at this and thinks that well, someone's getting more from those friends of some one school or one program.
Yeah, equi- equity would 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 take in the need factor.
So I don't. Right, but it doesn't.
More than just equality, but the need to distribution.
It's just.
Yeah, so I think when you look at a uh teacher grant or something like that, you're looking at need and 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 project and those kind of things. So um
I supported the this type of thing.
it does it does definitely have a direct.
Yeah, you have, yeah.
So I think sometimes that gets used in a change of ways. So I was speaking over here. If you also have a comment.
So ready to bring this back to the.
So you read this?
Yes. Uh next, who's next? Dean again.
Yes, so this one and a couple back uh is again more directly rather than looking at those institutions and their relationship with that. However, to this, this talks a little bit more about the activities um of advertising promotions. So this gets more direct uh on materials uh and approvals of materials and this kind of uh types of things. So when actually something is um affecting the environment and and that authority related to this.
Back in the days, there's flyers, there were Thursday packets and it was really, really strict about the district disclaimer on the. And I don't know how now that there's so much social media and so many things are done on people's websites, does that get more complicated to have those kind of disclaimers?
It could be a challenge, yeah.
And we overview.
It it's a it is a challenge. I mean, because simply, you know, that's how do you police in, you know, an Instagram account or somebody posts something, you know, that so, you know, we're looking at more uh more along the lines of those promotional materials that sometimes people like to sneak into something that we haven't given authority to. Um and so.
So selling something to school or role model.
Selling something that seems to be endorsed by the school, issued by you and everything are.
Right, yeah.
Yes, it's more than that we're endorsed by, like using the girls volleyball shit.
Right, yeah.
So so where again, there's there is uh some expectation from the community when they see it that that we have endorsed it when in fact we haven't. So that gives us, this policy gives us the right to go back to that person and say, well, you violated our policy, cease and desist because we have a policy that would go.
So it's probably more done that way because.
There's more to the fact in those cases unfortunately, but it did it's good to have a policy by which we can fall back on and if you tell somebody to stop doing what they're doing.
Is it just Andrew B on here on number three? I'm not sure on this, but I think that city government does not allow billboards at all.
Right.
Well, it's a scoreboard too.
But I mean, I don't know if it's uh.
But like generally jog up on the things or there are billboards out there.
Well, they're not built, they're put things on the.
What do you call it?
And there there have been banners, been issues.
Fans.
So the banners.
But we have we have defended those in the sense there was, I think it was mostly on walls because it's right on P C H and the people.
Right.
And we put the app the supporters out there as well, the banner.
Right, right.
But I think we did it by having it a limited time.
Yeah, I think there there is a key.
Yeah, that's true, that's.
Allows us some flexibility to say, you know, we're going to put something out for three months or during the season.
So I mean, that somewhere else where it risks like the time.
That would be in in a regulation that would come forward. Um but if that's the intent, that we would create um you know, some specifics around.
The event.
The event or whatever it might be, whether it's moved last and it stays up for the, you know, during the the pre proceeding and then it's risen over it, it's gone.
It's kind of like the the boys' basketball and I mean that advertisement stays up all year round though, right?
Oh, they have to pay, you know, and they're already somewhere, they're already exist. There's a limit on that, it's season and they have to pay again.
But they pay. Well, that's. That's right.
Some booster money. I mean, they pay and if they.
Yes, the boosters.
Oh, I'm just.
Again, authorizing boosters, raising money on behalf of students, this policy and that.
I just. I know, I just I just thought there I was like, oh, that's a booster though, that's not.
When when you'll find more of actually now uh was there was more requests for a short period of time for advertisements on websites, on school websites.
Oh.
You saw a little bit, yeah, especially athletic websites. So there was, you know, the um one of the lot of high schools had a specific, you know, sports website that they were driving people to that was run by the district. Well, a lot of people would like to put their advertisements on there for sporting athletic gear or whatever it might be. So there's a lot of that. We have to be able to police that and be able to say, but you know, are we going to do it as according to that? That's a false image for the essential. My purview, are we going to do it in the board's interest on allowing things like that to happen? What kind of regulation do we like put or something like that? Uh so if they're not having it all, it's in your.
Very definitely, I mean, you covered it in here. Well, particularly when you think of things like sports nutritional supplements.
Mm-hmm.
So.
And there's a there's actually a company out there that that will host your website because they provide the advertisements. And it's and a lot of boosters organizations were utilizing that and they were running the sports websites so that they could could host advertisements on it because boosters aren't limited to the same program systems. We are because they were hosting it themselves. So it gets really sticky. We try to stay away from some of those things, but.
It does, it does. It's complicated.
Yeah, it is complicated. So at least if we have some policy that says we would, you know, here's kind of where we stand on it and gives us some broad authority to say yes or no to some things. And then we'll continue to look at that regulation and make sure that it matches what the intent is. So if we decide we want to continue to and to make sure that banners are going up for the duration of their sporting event, if they're coming down, they're rotating them through and it'll seem to be christening it for continue to talk about gymnasiums, what does that look like? They're looking at changing the set up banners and kind of doing this uh uh kind of a facelift to what's currently in there. So that will also be part of the continued conversation there.
Can you guys that?
Well, this is just that would be different than, I know there there are sites you can go to where you can buy your athletic gear. So you put in yours and code it, ask you which high school or whatever, right? And just put your logo on it just to show you what it looks like. But they're not advertising, they're not doing it.
No, that's different.
That's a different and that's.
Maybe next, this is maybe.
Yeah.
Uh next is also Dean, just nice potential.
Right, uh this this relates more about identity. Uh we've got our um uh uh so first mention of support services recommending to the implement policy. So we have administrative, we also have a lot of forms and those forms relate back to board policy thirty five forty one transportation. So when uh somebody releases a waiver uh or anything else for transportation or they want to take their kid home from this event or that event or, you know, we're not providing transportation to that. Uh this board policy represents the the board level uh uh safety and the superintendent will designate and set up uh those processes and procedures, which we use through our insurance cooperative and uh risk management.
And so the final paragraph of this, since we don't do it, but just keep it in there because just in case we do, uh district no buses, we don't have it.
Yeah, we don't have district no buses. We do have a contractor, but yeah, so but they they do, these are embedded into our contract with that provider that they are required to do those things. So yeah.
Okay, so basically contract within those function as our buses.
Right.
Can you guys that specifically? Next is Lisa, who's district records.
So this is a policy that we do not have and I would say it's it's the bulk of it is based on the C S B A policy, but the last two paragraphs are from a legal opinion um related specifically to electronic records. There's been a lot of cases, um there's changes in case law um relative to electronic records. And so this um provides the district some guidance in terms of how to um both secure and um uh disseminate those records should they be requested under the public records act.
Are they are they disseminated electronically or would you?
Um primarily we do, um but they have to be produced, they they should be produced in the manner in which they're kept, although we have people who request them electronically and apply them.
Reasons for scanning everything that everybody at some point that's all happened.
We don't like you don't like that.
Considering how the world is now, I mean, how how safe are kind of are things? Are they just like everything else?
Well, and actually, as Dean and I were, we were talking about this yesterday and we did have a cyber audit that was conducted um prior to my arrival. Uh that showed that we are in a very good position and much better than uh probably even in the districts. So that's and then we will continue to ensure that we are keeping our um neutral impact. We won't need anybody going to access our information, holding a constant.
Mm-hmm.
Can you guys that the the.
Case though. Seven three. What case will this last two paragraphs? Case files? Um I don't know that off the top of my head, but I could try to find that for you. But at the C C S B A conference, they said they have pending cases going now on the.
This could very well continue to evolve.
So this could this right, this policy could change a lot just as case law.
Yeah, because the most recent revision for this was May of two thousand sixteen.
Yeah.
So you know that this continuity of all visitors actually competing cases out there. I think that will continue to determine at the extent of which electronic records late in time, so on, but but as I mentioned, um there is a, I think I mentioned it to you or Jan, that there is a list of all the electronic records that we're required to or all the records required to keep in terms of duration of time. Uh and how and it's, I guess, it's a long, very detailed book of exact dates for each article and item. So we will follow that in electronic format as well. So uh whether it's paper record, electronic record. So if we are supposed to destroy that for five years, it will be destroyed out for five years necessarily. If that's the case, we can do it that way. So um it's nice to clean out the boxes out of the way.
Okay, can you guys that?
Yeah.
Uh next is Dean and that's Dean, that's back to Dean.
Yes, again, this is again the uh soliciting and selling. It's along the same thing with the A S B kind of going. And this is roots to personnel and staff. That's why there's a three codes for. That's why there's a brief code for to be classified and represent groups. Uh but just talks about uh we'll have administrative uh board policy and administrative regulations related to these areas and uh um and then be able to control that environment.
Do you have to ask to explain the last sentence in paragraph C?
Sure.
How the tour has to be at the school premises, I'm I'm missing something here.
Oh, see, okay, all activities related to such tours must carry carry on outside of this, but ours.
Like in case somebody wants to come and just take take a wander through the campus.
No, this is related to, this is related to our our staff who might take somebody to Europe for example.
Oh, okay, fine.
Okay, I actually, my husband went to Spain and it's pretty great for us.
Right, right, right.
Right, yeah.
For the end, that's like.
Right, so France, we have, you know, we've had teachers too.
Yes.
A lot of times at one.
We're taking.
Okay, I've got it, okay, yeah, I was just like. So everything then is not not school related, it's but coming after, right, yes. So that's, so they can't, we had that one with the summer class a few years ago that was during. Even a lot of Spanish. Summer school class and it was actually it was related to the yeah. So. Kid's gonna take over the flowers.
Yeah. Voluntary, absolutely.
We didn't know, are you.
We're quick now, yeah.
To the flower bar in L.A. So anyway, what's good to Pina, this is, and these kind of things I've in the last couple years have seemed to expand. But I think it's really good to read. So the readings?
Yep.
Yes.
Paige, Alicia. Yes, so. Uh this policy acknowledges the critical support of our families. Um and how the parent involvement contributes to student success and they have our right to participate in their children's educational lives. Seems to be a lot more concise.
Yeah.
Than what we have. Any questions?
No, it's a good reply.
Bring it back to that part.
Yeah.
I mean, all cap required, so we do.
Yeah, we do.
And we do, so this is.
Yeah, a little more open.
It's nice, it is more open.
Alicia's next one, independent study, yes, so this one um kind of outlines the importance of independent study, that it's for students that are out for more than five days. It's voluntary, um it requires a written agreement, um and the specifics what independent study might look like.
I had exposed this seven years ago was and actually it was from Irvine, they had a program um before we had anything here. And it was students who just didn't fit in conventional classrooms, but was highly successful with. You could want to help us. Any questions? I want to bring this back, we certainly. Last minute, closed session, and this is a date of the vice of my local. This is Jason.
So this is um just some changes to uh for understanding of government code and the Brown Act. And talking about compensation, so um it updates the bylaw to clarify that the board may not meet in closed session under the personnel exemption of the Ralph Brown Act to discuss or act upon the votes change of compensation. Other than reduction of compensation that results from the imposition of discipline. So if there was disciplinary factor, then it would be personnel exemption. If negotiations like DeBarden's section is revised or like that, the board may meet with the district's designated representative in closed session. Under the labor exception of the Brown Act to discuss salaries, salary scales and compensation paid in former fringe benefits. Who they represented, unrepresented employees, including the supercat, so. So those are the uh clarifications that we made with the bits to. Law and the update solution.
Any questions on this? Bring your back.
I have to push on either.
Sure.
That's.
Oh, sure, sure.
Does does this replace like the Laurel Springs Independent Study or the um. Over those online places and stuff like that, or does that replace, like, normally you would just draw your student for the independent study, you know, the international another group. Would this just replace us so that we can support kids on independent study or or maybe they felt like they didn't have something within the district?
That is, that is our intent and we are actually um outlooking, there are a couple options out there, but programs that kids could attend online with either our teacher or their teacher.
Is that a ten?
We're looking at different options, but.
Yeah.
But that would be supportive and um maybe more comprehensive, we what they receive now.
And there was a dream that to bring. The last opposed to that.
Yeah, okay.
That look well, if it's a good.
Yeah.
Way to do it already.
We've got more on the fight thing, so what we'll do is um. I think might might be best is to to not mix and do first reads, second reads, bring them back, we'll we'll pack some first reads, second reads, and then we'll bring a whole another group uh moving forward.
Yeah, okay.
And I think it would be a challenge, not only from, I'm speaking for myself.
And.
Victoria, uh to bring them in um and mix them up so that you'd be wanting, this is first read or second read for this one, so I figured it would be your second. So they will come and walk like this and they'll assess and they'll wonder how long we need to catch up on.
Mm-hmm.
So as we go through this process, I appreciate the time that you're spending, we'll invite you. And then once they're all done, then we get to start an amendment regulation, so there's a lot of work to be done at the next gen or meeting after that, on these regulations.
Thank you. Next, we have presentation of our monthly financial report.
This is the report as of November thirtieth, so before the property taxes which come in December, we do get a little bit of of property taxes in in November, so for the early payments. Uh but you still say total revenue, we only have about thirteen million in revenue where we've already had twenty million in expenditures, so. Uh we got our cash drawer and we do that a little out there for the team fund, which is a six million in the in November. So the special reporting is at the bottom like it normally is, um uh you have page two is the reserve balance from the first interim report. And then page three, the basically, well, page ninety seven of the package, um or page of the report is is the detailed reporting with the cash balances and the transfers. O head we update on the quarterly basis, so that will come out the the December report. Uh because of timing of holidays and things like that and being able to prepare them in time, this is the November report. The first interim access is the October report because it's as of October thirty first, you're in, this is November report, next week, next meeting you'll get the December report. And then the second interim access will be January report because you'll get that from that. So the rest of the other funds are are uh as 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 usual as normal, um so it's just the end of the month. Any questions?
Question? Once again, I'm always appreciative of how you highlight the the different like the transfers in and out. That's critical.
Anything else?
I mean, I will, I look at, I compare back and forth and just sure that I can follow it all, so and it's easy to follow.
Yeah, that's. Yeah, and then we'll have the the surf, the road cap stuff will be up there for December and stuff like that. So here's uh.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, yes, temporary interfund transfer recording that you're as we asked, you put it back.
Seventeen? Okay. So again, yeah, this is the temporary transfer, uh we we took it out on September twenty eighth, right after the meeting, and if you notice that that's a low point right there in October, very low.
Very low.
We get a little bit in November and then December, we we, I think our our cash receipts came out of September ninth, not of December twenty. So on December twenty, we returned six million dollars.
Thank you for doing it in this fashion, but also it's so nice that we can do it ourselves without you doing things.
Right, and that shows the need, on November seventh it was down to four hundred seventy thousand, that's with the six million.
That's that's scary.
So the accuracy of cash flows and staff and everybody who does all that, it is very, it's uh very.
Now we have some action items, our first action item is a resolution to establish an interfund transfer for one million and twenty thousand from the general fund and the special reserve fund for capital improvements for twenty sixteen seventeen. And this is Dean.
This is the capital improvement program, the one that did the field renovation for the high school and the projects, you know, uh in the top world. This, uh one of what you know, it was in the capital improvement ten year plan. Uh last January when you approved the 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 plan, it was in our adopted budget when we approved that this last June for this fiscal year. And so this amounts now being its high duty transfer because now that we get our December property taxes, now we have enough cash in the fund to make the transfer, uh how to fund forty forty two for that.
Believe we have any measures in public to give some input on this item, are there any questions to staff on this? Can I ask for motion please, so the second? Alves in favor?
Hi.
Aye, opposed, there is five vote. Our next is action item is a resolution for an air fund transfer of nine hundred thousand from the general fund at the special reserve fund for facilities repair and replacement program for twenty sixteen seventeen, Dean.
Now the board's had in place uh facilities repair improvement forever since two thousand, uh around the block of time. So uh this is a commitment to maintain uh uh facilities. The capital improvement plan, the ten year plan also, it it not, it'll, it it covers routine maintenance, covers prefer, it covers the capital improvement plan, all of our facilities type activity. So this was planned back in January and the way it put in the plan is, you know, nine million dollars, the projects in that ten year plan, this is an attempt of about nine hundred thousand dollars. Um so this is the, it was approved, it was in the Oxford adopted budget, we approved in June uh for this fiscal year and so now again, as we have the December cash flows. Uh in January, we're asking to transfer the nine hundred thousand to fund forty forty, which is the facilities repair and replacement program.
Any questions? Then ask for motion please, the most. Alves in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, there is five vote. Next, section nine is a job description for teacher on special assignment, a concept or science.
So um as you've heard, um the NGSS implementation team has recommended that the district will transition to NGSS over the next year. And in order to support that work, um we're recommending the uh creation of two ten percent additional assignments that would be conducted this semester. Intended to be assigned to existing science teacher schedules as an additional assignment. And those identified teacher experts in science would support our district teachers with professional development on the performance expectations and instructional shifts of NGSS in an inquiry based approach. And they would also help develop those units.
Ask for motion please, second. Alves in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, there is five vote. Uh next action item is to approve an independent contract agreement with Julie Nyberg in an amount not to exceed five thousand five hundred dollars.
Thank you for your consideration, Julie Nyberg is a, um she's an extraordinary um person, she has a lot of knowledge around depth and complexity and how to use. Uh strategies to support all learners, but in particular, our advanced learners. Um she works with USC and Capital University, she's working at Irvine, Ontario, MacPhair, LSU SD. Um and she was able to squeeze us into some very tight, very busy schedules, so um we're pleased about the opportunity to work with her.
Questions on this?
Sounds good.
Sounds good. Alves, there is one more, second. Alves in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, there is five vote. Our next action item is approval of an independent contract agreement to a professional development consultant. Weston. Of the International Center for Leadership in an amount not to exceed thirty five thousand four hundred.
Yes, now Darlene, Amy and Mike brought uh introduced Weston to our district, he supported our teachers during their professional development days. Overwhelmingly, our teachers responded that he was extraordinary and most of them um in the comment section said bring him back, those three words, um nothing else. Um thirty six of them actually wrote that very comment over and over again, so we thought, well, maybe we ought to consider bringing him back. So um I want to acknowledge our principals and their work with their leadership teams to develop schedules, those are here for your uh doing. And today we met with him again and continued our.
I'd like to see the pair of components. But um thank you.
I like the that part of it and I love that it really listened to teachers.
And I think Diana's question, I do believe that we spread it out for the sub consideration, right?
Mm-hmm.
So it's.
Right, so we've been.
To bring it out as a.
We're very mindful trying to balance uh the subs, knowing that, you know, we've uh again, kudos to the community service department for continuing to find ways to to keep subs here. Um and we we are not like many other districts, my former career where principals are sitting in three to four classrooms a day. Uh we don't struggle with that, um and hopefully not ever, but we've, we're, we are mindful of trying to screen things so we can ensure that. That would be the best thing for our box.
And IUs will also be in the test.
Do you have a motion please, second. Alves in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, there is five vote. See, our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, January twenty fourth at six P.M., but we do have a meeting of the city at four.
Four.
Or at city hall, their their house, at their house. And I guess you'll be informed as if we need, we're going to decide what's done at that meeting, if the agenda is, what may be different.
Yes.
Right, I mean, we've had different things with different years where sometimes it's really, you know, productive meeting and other times it's. So.
You have some ideas.
Okay, so motion please, you're listed. Alves in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, there is five vote.